You're live.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today for our city council work session. Today's August 12th, 2024. It's approximately 1:00 PM. If you all join me for, if we could stand for a moment of silence for our men and women of the military and our police and fire that protect our city 24/7. If you'll join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll start off with the jobs of the week with Sarah Rainey.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sarah Rainey. I am the one-stop coordinator for the Southwest Region of the New Mexico Workforce. All right, for jobs of the week, we have a utility rate analyst. This is for the city of Las Cruces. The position starts at $58,000 and the posting closes on August 19th. We also have a utility systems crew leader for $23.79 an hour and the posting closes on the 19th as well. We have for White Sands Missile Range, an information technology specialist. That posting starts at $87,000 a year and it closes on the 19th. For Donaiana County, we have a heavy equipment operator. The position starts at $16.81 an hour and the posting closes in September. For Kids Quest Academy, we have a contractual lead childcare teacher. Position starts at $13 an hour and closes on September 1st. We also have an accountant senior at NMSU for $53,000 a year and the posting closes on the 5th of September. I wanted to encourage you all, I know we've touched on it a couple of times, for the Community of Hope events that we do. I know in light of recent things, some of the issues are job readiness. I want to remind everybody that we go to Community of Hope every month. We sit down with everyone, we do their resumes, we do interview skills, we search for jobs. We also have them come back to the office and continue this work so that there's continuous intervention and help and reminders about how they can get on their feet. Right now, I reach out to council members and encouraging local businesses to help us reach out to these employees, these workers. They need jobs. We need employers to step up and come with us to these events and maybe do some onsite hiring, interviews and whatnot. We can get with them. If they would reach out to me, I can set them up with this and we can make this an even bigger event each month and more inclusive. With that, we can be reached over there at the Alameda office, on our webpage, employeenm.com and through all of our social medias. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have pets of the week with Amy DeFelix.
Hello, everyone. I'm Amy DeFelix, one of the rescue coordinators for the Animals Services Center of the Mesia Valley. I pick and present the pets of the week every week and we always start off with the cat of the week, who is Delhi this week. Her number is 77637 and she says, "I may be a bit reserved at first, but that's just because I'm taking my time to get to know you. I'm independent, so I'll give you your space, but don't get me wrong. I'll appreciate your gentle pats and soft whispers. I love exploring my surroundings on my own terms, finding cozy spots to curl up in. I'm a quiet companion, perfect for those who value tranquility. I'm not one to demand constant attention, but I'll always be there, a steady presence in your life." And then we also have a dog of the week, who is Jessie this week. Her number is 66337 and she says, "I'm always on the move, whether it's chasing my tail or playing fetch with the shelter staff. My days are filled with toys, treats and lots of fun. I love learning new tricks, especially when there's a tasty reward involved. My energy is contagious and I'm known for bringing smiles to everyone's faces, but I do need some help reining in my energy, especially around other dogs sometimes. What I'm really looking for is a patient and experienced forever home where I can share all of my love and joy." And then we have a couple of adoption events this week. We will be at Petsmart this Saturday, the 17th. We'll be there from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then on Sunday, the 18th, we will have some dogs available for adoption at Milagro Coffee Espresso. So we hope to see you there on either location. And then general events going on, we are participating in the NBC Clear the Shelters Nationwide Event. It started on August 10th, which was Saturday, and it'll go on until September 10th. And so to celebrate Clear the Shelters and to help get all as many of our loving pets that need homes out, all of our adoptions are going to be $50 the entire event. And regarding any links, we have our general website, ascmv.org, and then we're all over social media, Facebook, Instagram and TikTok is where we'll upload some highlights, some events going on. And then YouTube and Spotify and Apple Podcasts is where we will upload episodes of Tales from the Past Side, which is our podcast. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Next are our agenda items, 3.1, annual update from Economic Development Partners. And Elizabeth Teeters will introduce.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Elizabeth Teeters. Every year, we have our Economic Development Partners give an update to City Council. We decided to split it up into two different work sessions this year. So last month was Farmer's Market and Film Las Cruces. And today we'll be doing the Mesia Valley Economic Development Alliance and Downtown Las Cruces Partnership. And with that, I'll start with Mr. Daven Lopez.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Mayor, Mayor Pretend, councilors, thank you for having us here today. As Elizabeth mentioned, this is our year-end update. We give a couple of meetings to you for the year, but this really was to talk about the opportunities and challenges we've seen doing economic development here in Las Cruces specifically over the last year and how our metrics compare against the contract that we signed with the city. I also have Brian Garcia. He's my VP of Business Development who's here with me today. So in case there are some questions that he needs to answer, I have him here for. So thank you. First, I know we're all aware of each other, but kind of I always like to give a reintroduction. Mavida's mission, we're about growing the economic base and economic-based opportunities for the entire region, the New Mexico borderplex region, which is Donaiana County, Las Cruces, and then all the communities within the county as well. I say this because we concentrate in one area of economic development. That's primarily growing economic-based businesses and that's supporting companies in terms of business attraction or existing companies that we're trying to make sure that once we have them here, we don't want to lose them, right? We want to keep helping them, find them resources and let them grow. But it creates, I think, a discussion of the unique partnership we have with the city because although we concentrate on these areas which are high impact, it allows the staff in the city to be able to work on other areas of economic development that are important to the city as well. We are a full-service 501(c)(3) organization. We are given input by a board of directors that's both private and public. You, the city of Las Cruces, the mayor and the city manager are both board members. But we also have board members that comprise Donaiana County, New Mexico State University, Las Cruces School System, Donaiana Community College, the Chambers of Commerce and about 15 other private sector board members that represent the interests of the private sector for economic-based growth. What that basically means is we have a large amount of diverse input that goes forward, that's advised to us as staff in terms of our economic development strategies and moving forward. I also want to say that because we are a membership organization, we receive dollars from the private sector to do economic-based economic development. So we're able to take the contract we have with the city and leverage that into more dollars, more of a robust budget that then we can move to the market and compete a little bit more effectively against other communities and states across the country. So that being said, for example, our contract with you to do economic development services is $250,000, but we leverage that into an over $1 million budget for economic development for the region. And I'll talk a little bit more about how we spend those dollars, especially here in Las Cruces. Our services are, we try to attract industry. I mentioned that just a second ago. Retention and expansion, that is with supporting existing companies and helping them grow. We also feel we are an economic development advisory group consultant to the city and the county as well as the state. I've always said we are the go-to-market, the client-facing organization. So we hear what clients want or expect in terms of relocation, a competitive relocation. And it's our job to come back and tell you as policymakers what we're hearing so that you can make those effective changes that make us more competitive. And then capacity building is an area we've been working a lot on. And that is really, what are we learning that we have gaps or deficiencies? And what can Mavida do to help support that, whether that's incentives, workforce objectives and programs? And I'll talk about that in a second as well. For purposes of our contract, this past year, past couple of years, we've been really asked by the city to go after trying to put the Las Cruces Innovation and Industrial Park on the map. That's the majority of what our target has been for the city of Las Cruces. So although from a metric perspective, I'm going to talk more about industry attraction, the one box on the far left. I do also, we'll talk about, a little bit about the other things we're bringing to the city of Las Cruces through those other services that I just mentioned. So as an organization representing the entire region, let me first talk about, you know, our entire regional results that we've had. So what you see on, in terms of the graph there is our dashboard. That is created by our board of directors, which sets the tone for what we're trying to establish as goals in terms of site visits, companies on the ground, kicking dirt, looking at potential opportunities. Qualified prospects, that's an outlier of our marketing efforts. That's where we identify projects that are planned on having a move in the next 18 to 24 months. And they have identified our region or Las Cruces specifically as a potential location that they are considering. And then we break it down into final results in terms of number of completed projects, the jobs created as a result of those projects, payroll generated as a result of those jobs, and then the capital investment that's going to be made in the area through new construction, the establishment of new facilities or purchasing of equipment in the area. And I'll talk a little bit about more about that because that's very important, I think, in terms of how we're growing the industrial park. And then I'll talk about our retention and expansion consultations. That's again where we go out, we meet with existing companies, listen to them, try and understand their challenges and hopefully figure out resources to keep them here and help them grow. But overall results, we had a pretty, we had a pretty positive year. 628 new jobs were established, $26.2 million in new payroll, once they're all in place, that's annual payroll. That'll lead to $155 million in new capital investment committed to the area through new construction. That is significant than new tax base in terms of new construction GRT. 23 site visits that we had in the region, that's boots on the ground. 76 qualified prospects, 15 completed projects and 56 retention and expansion consultations. So we were very busy, but that's kind of a snapshot of what we did as an organization and for the entire region. These are some of our completed projects that we've had. On the left are actually new job creation projects. And on the right are companies we assisted with our automate-up program. And that's helping to train and scale up the workforce for new technology-related growth sectors of the economy. And I'll talk about that in a moment as well. So let me talk a little bit specifically about what the metrics were for the contract with the city of Las Cruces. Really, they wanted us to take a marketing approach, put the Innovation and Industrial Park on the map. And this is a little bit about our activity. Trade shows exhibited at, we exhibited at five trade shows representing Las Cruces. We walked 20 trade shows representing Las Cruces. When I, when I say we walk trade shows, it's much more cost-effective to walk than to exhibit at a trade show. I mean, you have to have a pretty healthy budget to try and exhibit with the cost of dollars. That's $10,000, $15,000 usually per trade show easily. So we walk a lot. And what that means is we hit a trade show, we walk, talking to all the exhibitors, all the vendors very hard, trying to understand, do they have expansion plans moving forward in the future? So that we can start communicating with them on a more effective basis, nurturing our relationships with them and growing those opportunities. Usually from the time we identify an opportunity, it's usually 18 months minimum before decisions are being made for a final site solution. So these are not things that happen overnight. We are always trying to nurture the relationship, talk about Las Cruces, the opportunities here, and hopefully they make a decision to want to put their business proposition here as well. In terms of our marketing, you heard from Carlos Pata at our last presentation just a few months ago. And that was, you know, a pretty healthy 30-minute presentation. And he talked a little bit more about how we are actually using digital media, social media, traditional media in terms of getting our message out to the world. But through that, we've established relationships with some trade industry magazines where we do advertise in from time to time, but we also receive a lot of organic earned media through them as well. But we have over 100,000 plus on our distribution list through the print marketing. Through our targeted digital marketing, that's social media and other forms of like LinkedIn to get our message out. We have over 1 million subscribed audience. We reach out to site selectors on a regular basis. They are consultants who usually have their hands on multiple number of expansion projects every year. They're in very high demand with other, with other communities. So we have to be, we have to be client-facing with them on a regular basis. But we, we have a nurture marketing campaign that gets in front of those 234 consultants that we target on an annual basis several times a year. Our entire estimated marketing and business development spend on behalf of Las Cruces alone is estimated to be around $600,000. So again, we're turning that $250,000 contract that you provide to us through relationships and other fundraising mechanisms to provide you with a $600,000 marketing campaign. And that's above and beyond the other aspects that I mentioned, the services that we do offer, that we bring to the table here. So let me kind of let you know the good news and then I'll talk about the challenges. So the good news is the marketing is working. We are getting the Las Cruces Innovation and Industrial Park on the map for more projects and more looks. If you look at projects considering all of Donaiana County, they are primarily looking at both Santa Teresa and the Las Cruces Innovation and Industrial Park for potential locations. And then there's projects that we've established that are only considering Las Cruces for various reasons. And I want to hone in on that for a second. So although, if you add 28 plus 15, 43 projects have considered Las Cruces as a whole. 15 of them have really honed in on only the Las Cruces Innovation and Industrial Park, which is, which is a 37% increase over the year before. Now, Santa Teresa still dominates itself kind of as the industrial base of the region. So right now they are getting a little bit more looks, only considering Santa Teresa. But I mentioned this because it's very important to realize, we're providing a message out there to companies that are targeting the reasons why Las Cruces makes more sense. And sometimes it makes sense for a company to go to Santa Teresa, like if you need rail, Santa Teresa is the place to be. If you, if you have supply chain that's crossing the border into Juarez, you know, multiple times per day, you know, Santa Teresa is the place you want to be. But if you want great Interstate 10 access that has direct access to the seaports of LA and Long Beach, for example, for supply chain, then Las Cruces makes a very strong case for that. The fact that you also, it's a city-owned industrial park primarily and provides you the flexibility to be more nimble than the private sector, that adds some, some opportunities as well to attract other customers. And then thirdly, when, when companies look at the area, they look at the metro area of Las Cruces and perhaps see more, and with New Mexico State and DACC right here, they see more of the opportunity to tap into workforce and pipeline than you may see in San Antonio. So there's different reasons for being in different places, but I want to let you know that we're really honing in on companies that are now saying, hey, this location here is ideal. So in terms of our contract specifically with the city, we were asked to have a goal of 24 qualified prospects. In this case, we knocked it out of the park, 54 qualified prospects. We're looking at the city of Las Cruces. We were asked to get boots on the ground, nine site visits. We had 11 site visits this year. And in terms of completed projects, we had a goal of four, but we actually were able to establish six projects. Many of those were in our retention and expansion program and we can talk about that in a moment. But we hit our goals in this area. The other side of our contract was a little bit more challenging than we displayed on the marketing side. We actually had goals of 300 jobs to be creative with $10 million in payroll and $17 million in capital investment. We weren't able to establish that this year, and that's just being completely honest. We were able to establish 37 jobs, 1.56 million and $840,000 in new capital investment. There's a couple of reasons for this. If you look at the chart below, when we come into the, into the new year and we talk to staff about what goals we are, we're setting ourselves on, what we want to hit, we're looking at pipeline that we've established over the prior 18 months. That's how we kind of determine and feel what our confidence level in saying, can we get them here? And in this case, when we entered the contract this past year, we, we had a lot of confidence. We were going to bring several projects to fruition. Those projects are listed below. And in some cases, they died on the vine, which just sometimes happened. Unfortunately, more of them did than resulted in, in actually locate, locating here. And then, then a couple got delayed. We were expecting by all means that they were going to make an announcement that they were going to locate here, but because of certain financing tools that we were introducing them to, other challenges, not to say they're gone, just the projects are delayed and we're hoping that we're going to be able to close on them this year. So it's just the nature of the cycle sometimes in terms of what we do. But if you look at kind of the fluctuation of what job creation and capital investment have been like over the last five years, the yellow bars represent Las Cruces, the red bars represent the other parts of Donaiana County where we've been able to establish jobs. You'll see there's fluctuation. You'll see that post-pandemic, we had four very good years of job creation and announcements here in Las Cruces specifically, and then we dropped in 2024. But if you look at capital investment, and this is where I want to lead some of the lessons learned as part of this conversation, is you'll see capital investment continues to be very low in Las Cruces. Compared to the red bar in Santa Teresa primarily, FY '22, FY '23 and FY '24, they're seeing significant amounts of capital investment. And the reason why is because Santa Teresa right now is just more development-ready than we are here at the Las Cruces Innovation and Industrial Park. Right now, with industrial space at an all-time low vacancy around the country, companies are either looking for places where there's existing industrial space for them to move into, which is becoming fewer and fewer and fewer. Other more established markets around the country are now expanding and building industrial space much quicker than we are in New Mexico overall and much quicker than we are in Donaiana County. But in lieu of having existing space, that requires a company to take a strategic approach to actually build their own space. And normally you have to have development partners ready to put up that space at the same time that that's going to happen. Santa Teresa's been able to establish themselves in that. We are not quite there. But leads me to what we believe this year is going to look like. As I mentioned, a couple of those projects were delayed. We expect them to close this year. But in almost all cases, these are, these are hot prospects, as we call them. We feel very, you know, very confident right now that we're going to get to the finish line with these projects, primarily in the Las Cruces Innovation and Industrial Park, but in Las Cruces. But you'll see something unique about this. You'll see that on the right-hand side, all but one of them really has significant capital investment associated with it. One to the tune of $80-plus million. So one of the things I'm thinking is going to happen, if we can show demand, we can show cranes in the air, that's going to make a big difference in terms of bringing confidence to attract some of the developers who we need to look at our area to put capital investment into. So we're coming into the year feeling bullish again, maybe more so not on the job side creation, but on the capital investment side, which could lead to more opportunities down the line. So now let me move into those other blocks that are outside of the contract, but things we still do for the city of Las Cruces. Our retention and expansion program, I realized there was a keystroke error on companies consulted. It's actually 33, not 43, but still compared to the 52 that we did as a whole throughout the county, that's a pretty good significance of companies we were able to work with here in Donaiana County. Again, trying to understand their, here in Las Cruces, I'm sorry, trying to understand their needs, help them grow and then see if there's opportunities for them to create new job creation. We believe we've identified eight projects. We identify a project out of our retention and expansion consultations as those companies who say, yeah, I think we can grow this year, not just retain, but actually grow. And so if all goes well, if all eight of those companies do, do grow here, we're talking about potentially 40 new jobs through our retention and expansion program alone and over $4 million in new capital investment. Usually that's equipment investment as they're retooling and growing. So an additional tool, let me see, oh, an additional tool we've been building over the last three years, supporting growth. This is part of our capacity building service to, to you in Donaiana County, is with a relationship through the Community Foundation of Southern New Mexico, through, they manage the New Mexico Economic Development Fund. We've been able to establish an incentive called a closing incentive that we can utilize to try to attract companies to get past the finish line here. So it's hard dollars that we can assist a company with in terms of new equipment purchases or growing their jobs. So in the last three years that we've had this program, we've helped five companies here in, in Las Cruces, leading up to 956 announced jobs and over $290,000 deployed. Those are all private sector grant dollars that we've deployed. It's not tax dollars or, or public dollars. But it was a needed tool that, in order for us to be competitive against other markets, it was a needed tool we had to have here to complement what the state could bring to the table. Another tool that we built this past year specifically is our automate-up program. It was a pilot program this year and we're looking to move it into full launch now as we speak. But the premise of the program was to assist these companies that are required to, to adopt new technologies. Like for example, advanced manufacturing was the first one. Manufacturing, moving to advanced manufacturing requires new skillsets. And in lieu of programs that are not currently available through our school systems or community college, we had learned through, through, through industry itself that there's these micro-certifications that can help skill up an employee to meet the needs and changes of the new equipment that's being purchased for advanced manufacturing. So through that, we identified seven types of certifications. All of them were some type of advanced manufacturing, but crossed a variety of different industries, whether that was traditional manufacturing or even food processing and food sciences. And we helped eight companies go through that process. We helped train 69 and certify 69 individuals across multiple certifications. So we actually gave out 159 certifications. And we did that with a grant from the New Mexico Economic Development Department. We did that for $25,000. So this brings us to the relationship we have this coming year, right now, with the city of Las Cruces as we're a recipient of some dollars, the ARPA dollars that you had available to expand this program and provide industry certifications and growing technologies, but more targeting the growing industries here in Las Cruces specifically. So that could entail some advanced manufacturing, but it'll also include, you know, maybe telehealth, video game development, because that's been on our radar for a long time and the certifications they need. Other types of coding that are needed for whether it's Microsoft, AWS, or other types of certifications for those, for those individuals to grow in their careers. And a slew of others that are important for industries we're trying to grow here. We're also expanding the program through these dollars to not only get in front of existing employees and their employers, but we're also reaching out to Donaiana Community College as well as the CTE programs at Las Cruces Schools because we want to see if we're able to provide these certifications directly to the students. So by the time they're, they're graduating or leaving their So by the time they're they're graduating or leaving their programs, they are workforce ready for these jobs that are now growing here in the future. So we're excited about this potential. It's taken a lot of work, even as as we set up the pilot program, and we're hoping to have full launch into these other industries this year. And then finally, in terms of our economic advisory, as I mentioned, and our capacity building services, I've mentioned the need for attracting development capital. And this brings me to a conversations we're having with staff right now and the city manager's office regarding a unique program where we're able to tap again into private sector dollars, the Community Foundation of Southern New Mexico's New Mexico Economic Development Fund, and and get some of those private sector dollars to complement some of the resources you have at the Las Cruces Innovation and Industrial Park to attract a developer to come to the area and put spec in the ground, take the risk on our marketplace, because we know if you take the risk on our marketplace, by the time you start building, you'll probably have it leased. And that's that's one of the most important lessons we've learned this past year. And we've had that lesson because we've been watching Santa Teresa for a long time. You know, 12, 13 years ago, when Foxconn came and built their facility on the other side of the border, we thought that was going to be the catalyst that was going to drive drive supply chain to our area. Didn't happen. When Union Pacific came and invested their $500 million, it did create jobs through Union Pacific. We thought that was going to be the catalyst. It didn't happen at that time. It wasn't until right around prior to the pandemic that one speculative developer from Dallas came and took a chance on the market. They built a 300,000 square foot building, and before it was even finished, they had it leased out. Since then, they've put about over 1.5 million square feet of additional speculative development into Santa Teresa. And that's one of the reasons why there is robust growth there the past few years. It's because there is readily available facilities for companies to identify and move into. And that's where we want this to go for the Las Cruces Innovation and Industrial Park. So it's it's very exciting to say we have a tool that's attracting private sector dollars. We're also talking with staff about what we're calling a shovel-ready initiative. That's also a private-public partnership with with developers. But what we're trying to do is see if we can partner on a specific site at the at the industrial park and have that company do renderings, drawings, pre-permitting, everything, so we can shorten the timeline of development from when they actually identify a client. So it's time to market and the cost-to-market aspects of it. So I'm excited. Mayor, you know, and Councilor Flores, I think you know from the the PRC meetings of the past, you know, I've been talking about this for years. So we're happy to see that we may have something we can work with moving forward to help grow the industrial park here. And what it's about is cranes in the air, confidence in the market, and then attracting those companies. So I want to leave with this note. This came from the Federal Reserve Bank of Dallas El Paso Branch, July 2024. Southern New Mexico demonstrates impressive economic vitality with the latest employment figures showing 2.8% growth compared to the previous year, outpacing both state and national averages. This growth underscores the region's attractiveness for business and workforce development. Las Cruces being the largest city in Southern New Mexico, I think that's something for all of us to be proud of. It's not just Mavita's efforts, but it is also the the efforts of your economic development team and as well as our partners in the region. So with that, I will leave it for any questions you may have for Brian or myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Devin, for the presentation. Is there any questions, Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Devin. So the picture literally that we saw is impressive in one way, but not so impressive as to what has come to Las Cruces. And I think, I know when I started on council more than seven and a half years ago, we already had a contract with you. And and then I think we upped the ante on that in terms of the money distributed to you. So my question is this. After all these years, is it, you know, it seems like you've been milking the dry cow. So are we a dry cow? Is there any point in going on? Quite frankly, and with all due respect, Devin, I think you've done wonders for Santa Teresa. And I'm happy to know that there's a region in New Mexico that is benefiting from your work. But frankly, I don't see how it's really benefiting us. Now, if you were to do a study that shows how Santa Teresa, you know, the the wealth, the revenue that's being built up there is somehow being funneled to us because there's more houses being built here. Well, nobody wants to drive from Las Cruces to Santa Teresa. And the jobs in Santa Teresa, I hear, offers jobs to people who live in Mexico. I don't know if that's true or not. And with all due respect, there's nothing wrong with that. There's nothing wrong with what you presented, but there's a missing, there's just a missing link there. Where do we come in? And you're saying, well, if the industrial, you know, the industrial park had a building structure, yada, yada, they would come. But that's the first time I hear you say that. And it's like, build it and they will come. Well, I don't know. You know, I think that economic development, the city has some plans for that. But I mean, how, how do you, when do you think any of this, everything you're doing, you know, I know you travel throughout and this and that, but I was trying to take notes of an accomplishment and, you know, two pages and, you know, something that really benefits Las Cruces. I didn't see it, Devin. Is there anything that you can help me with on that? Did I miss something?
Well, Mayor, Councilor Flores, I guess I would respectfully ask you, look at our body of work. Because if you look at the even the years past, we we've had very strong years in terms of job growth, and then we have these cycles that take place. I think what we're trying to do is establish right now the opportunities for the Innovation and Industrial Park in a market where industrial growth around the United States is has some very unique trends that are taking place that I think we can take advantage of right now. So, yeah, so I'm not going to disagree with this year. This year, yeah, we had a tough year in terms of closing the deals. But we had a great year in terms of providing exposure to Las Cruces and the Innovation and Industrial Park. But sometimes we're not in control. We don't always have the tools, the policy, to get them to the finish line. You know, we are trying to market them, but it's not like we have the tools to really just make them enforce a decision, right? But that being said, I try to give you a snapshot of those projects that got delayed and where we think we're we're going to see opportunity this year. But it is, it's it's an effort that is year to year, but it takes a body of work in several years in order to grow programs, grow opportunities. And and I guess the other thing is what what we're providing to the residents of Las Cruces, you you looked about at that Automate Up program, right? That is something no one's tackling. And we decided we were going to tackle it with dollars we could find elsewhere, not city of Las Cruces dollars, so that we could skill up individuals here in Las Cruces for the workforce of the future. So, yeah, in terms of closing the jobs, I think it was been a very challenging year. I'm very upfront with that. But I think if you look at our body of work, you'll see that year after year, overall, we provide a return on investment to the city for the dollars they give us.
What was that investment? Is there a report on the investment, the return on all of this? I am telling you, I didn't see anything regarding Las Cruces. And I am not in any way challenging you and the work you've done in terms of the benefit to the county or to Santa Teresa. And and a lot of this, Devin, has been, well, it's in the making. It's in the making. It's in the making. And and maybe I'm feeling impatient because I know Rome wasn't built in a day. I know that much. But I guess after seven and a half years going on, eight years here at City Council, I just, you know, we don't have the jobs and we don't have the industry. And and I, so honestly, do you think that maybe you're milking a dry cow? Maybe there's no point in seeing what's here for Las Cruces? And and do you work closely with Elizabeth and Chris on this?
Mayor, City Council, yes, we do work very closely with Elizabeth and Chris. So I I'm not sure I understand the reference of milking a dry cow.
It means that you're trying to get something out of something that won't give. In other words, what are the objective conditions of our city that have not allowed you to bring industry of some sort? You know, that's the milk, that's a milk cow analogy.
So, yes, Mayor, City, Councilor Flores, one of the things, and I've been talking about this on the PRC for years, the need to attract speculative development and capital. That's not new. It's not the first time I've ever said this. I've been saying it for five, six years to the point where it's almost like I'm jokingly quoted sometimes. But that is a tool I think we need to bring, but we're not, we have not been in control to be able to do that. We've now found some pockets of dollars through this relationship with the Community Foundation of Southern New Mexico to bring private sector dollars, but we still need more of the city's support in terms of making this happen and making it a value statement. I don't think it's milking a dry cow. I just think I think we need to put more effort into this is is quite frankly what it comes to it. And, you know, when you talk about the investment we make in economic development and industry attraction, not only locally but as a state, I mean, we are falling behind in terms of competing against cities and states around the country. We had a consultant come to our board retreat this past, a month ago, because we wanted to hear what they had to say about how Texas does things. And these little communities in Texas have sometimes 10, 20, 30 times the amount of dollars invested in in economic development than we do here. And I just think I think that's an important note to take. We need to invest more if we want more. But I think with the tools we've had, especially what I'm hoping the pipeline we have right now, what I what I showed you here, we closed three of those projects. Then there's cranes in the air. And that's the main thing, cranes in the air, establishing confidence so that more investors and developers can put their money into the marketplace. And Mayor, Councilor Flores, one last thing. We do run an R, an impact analysis every year. We break it out specifically for jobs within the city of Las Cruces. And we provide that at the end of, at the end of every year. So we are right now working on our final reports for the city. But those past reports have been available to you each and every year for, I think, the last seven or eight years.
Well, for the last seven or eight years, it's been about the same. No cambiado nada. Pero muchísimas gracias. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Councilor Flores. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. I just want to add, as 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 Councilor Flores, I kind of felt the same way where you grow impatient and you want to see results. And and I know it's been a while, but I'm also on the board, and I signed up on that so that I could see what's going on firsthand. And they do a lot of work. And I see that your production agency isn't here today. But I know Carlos does a tremendous job in in marketing for Las Cruces and Doñana County. So now I feel like I'm very optimistic. I I like the approach that we're going, and we're working with public and private partnerships now looking at the industrial park and maybe some speculative buildings to take place. So, yeah, we just, unfortunately, we have to be a little bit more patient. But I think there's there's some things coming down the pipe now that are working. And we're very fortunate that things are really booming in Santa Teresa that 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 it is going to get closer. It is going to get closer to Las Cruces. And I I see some promising things coming. So I'm optimistic, and I I see all the work that goes in to economic development from Mavita, and I thank you for that, Devin.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, no further questions. We'll move on to the next one, which is the Downtown Las Cruces Partnership.
Okay, and now I will turn it over to Ms. Susan Greenwald-Cabeo. Oh, you're right there. Sorry, on the wrong side. Boo. Good afternoon. I am Susan Greenwald-Cabeo. I am the Executive Director of Downtown Las Cruces Partnership. This is our annual report. So you can see that I am the Executive Director. As of October, I was the interim Executive Director. And in March, I am the permanent Executive Director. In the past, we've had two employees, but it looks like for now and in the foreseeable future, we are a one-woman show as far as staff. Our executive board is John Munoz. He's here with us today of Electronic Caregiver, Dr. Jeffrey Stewart, who owns MVV Pharmacy, and Dr. Kristen Moorhead, who is our secretary. She is outgoing. I put that on this slide just to make her know for sure that we were not signing her up for three more years of secretarial duty. So, guys, the mission statement of Downtown Las Cruces Partnership is to create a signature business destination that celebrates our region's rich cultural heritage, local arts and culture, and contributes to a thriving, sustainable, and economically thriving downtown. One thing I would say about Downtown Las Cruces this year, that it is thriving, but it's also fragile. And we're going to talk about why those two things are both true. So, business activity. So in the past, we have just reported businesses lost and businesses gained. However, we are having, I think, a renaissance downtown. You can see that we have three businesses that have relocated to the district. So that's somewhere else in Los Cruces. We have three businesses that have relocated outside the district, meaning they've moved to a different part of town, but they're still in Las Cruces. We have six businesses that are permanently closed. We have nine that are new, and we have six that are in the process of opening. And by in the process of opening, I mean that they have a building and are working on a sign. So that means not just kind of in the theory stage, but really in the process of opening within the next six months. And I will tell you that this is a snapshot. So this is our year as of when, as of, I guess, the end of June. But within the last week, I have been contacted by three businesses that are getting ready to open. I have also been told by one business that they are closing. So there's a lot of flux in this chart. I would say, too, that the reason that we are not having more new business downtown is there is really a lack of places for business to move in where the rent is affordable and that has access to foot traffic. So kind of these moving in and out of all these, kind of the same buildings, they're kind of the same spaces that, you know, someone moves in, someone almost, someone moves out, excuse me, someone almost immediately moves in. So we're kind of having this growth is more of, I would say, maybe kind of closer to a churn of businesses that, or I guess business locations that are affordable and viable being kind of taken. Another reason we don't have as many new businesses is businesses are staying longer. So we don't have the rapid influx as we did when La Squina opened to almost entirely retail, because that that really kind of flipped the script on downtown. And having that essentially as a shopping mall not only filled that space, but the spaces around it started to become filled more quickly. So our accomplishments this year, we have over 350 direct business contacts. That means that me or our board have talked to these businesses either over the phone, sometimes by DMs, because that's how businesses like to communicate sometimes, or by email. So these are times that we're directly contacting the business owner, kind of figuring out what's going on. We do BR and E surveys. We do at least five each month so we can track our project, our progress in a kind of a set way that we have, also, we have reinstated our microloan program. So our microloan program is a $5,000 loan at 3% simple interest, which equals the term of the loan, about $450. So we did this, we announced our microloan recipient in June. Since then, I have had five requests for microloans. Right now, we have the funding for a three-year cycle. So if all of our people are five years on a three-year term, it kind of, it refunds itself. So if we want to expand this program, it's going to be fundraising for us to find some more funds to get those funds to businesses. So we have a redesigned Business Spotlight and ACD Icons program. This year, we have a new media team. They've really thought about how these videos work. As they were, before, they were absolutely beautiful, but we found that they were a little long. No one is going to watch a three-minute video. So no matter how beautiful it is. So we have cut them down to under two minutes, done a little bit of boosting, and I have a graph about that that to kind of show you how that project has expanded. We had a record crowd at Chili Drop. We had CNN coverage. It was a magical night. It really was. We have had the largest zombie walk attendance to date last year. We've had improved visibility and accessibility. One of the, one of the things that's contributed to that is us really focusing our messaging on how we can help businesses. I think in the past, a lot of our messaging kind of revolved around the events that we do or other kind of projects that we have. But just recently, we did a video, unfortunately, starring me, talking about how businesses can get in touch with us. Guys, that has been tremendous. I think we really have not emphasized all the resources that we bring to the table, and a lot of those are through New Mexico Main Street as well. So guys, you were here when we had opportunities for our interns to meaningfully engage with the community. That was such a great experience. I know for me, hopefully for you as well. We have significantly increased our presentations and speaking engagements. So if you guys know of anyone who has a hot mic and 20 minutes, I'm your girl. I will talk about downtown all day long. I have the slide deck ready, ready to travel. I have spoken to the Coalition of Conservatives in Action. I have spoken to Rotary. I speak every city council meeting, anytime I'm at the county. So just really getting our face and our message out to the community and how they can be more involved. We've also had more and deeper collaborations with the city and local nonprofits. For example, we are really working closely with the Arts Council to make sure that we are not programming over each other as far as writing programs. So we are attending their open mic, and they hopefully are going to start attending our writers' workshops. So we have substantial reach rate and presence on social media. Again, I have a chart to talk about that in a little bit. We had our first B2B Quick Connect event. Guys, this was pretty amazing for us. We had 36 businesses actually join us. We had eight, I'm sorry, we had 11 vendors there. So it was the city where Cruz and Selena did, and Blair did a fantastic job of telling businesses, for example, what media, I'm sorry, media, what data services the city provides, which is probably the thing I got the most compliments about. Like, I had no idea I could get all this market analysis and I could get it for free. Yes, you can, right? But we had, we had New Mexico Main Street there. We had, we had New Mexico Department of Economic Development there. We had, we had West. So a lot of different places that they could plug in. Said really successful. Hopefully, we grow that this next year. We had a successful Generations in Lit Fest. We are going to have Generations again, but I think we're going to roll Lit Fest into something bigger that the city's working on. So to be announced. We have, we have had more direct connections between businesses and New Mexico Main Street Revitalization Specialist Technical Assistance. So one of the really great things that we can do, that nobody else can do, is if you are in the district and you are a business owner, we can connect you directly with technical assistance through a New Mexico Main Street Revitalization Specialist. So if it's something that I can't handle, like you're a business in the downtown area and you need a logo for free, I can hook you up with that. Right? If you need a market analysis, again, for free, I can, I can help you with that. I mean, so there's so many surfaces that we all offer. One thing we did this year is we had a business who was a taproom that wanted to move downtown. And so we had a New Mexico Main Street Specialist, Will Powell, whose background is architecture. We walked six properties on Thanksgiving Eve to see would a, would a taproom work here? And he was really helpful in saying, you know, this property really needs to be remediated. It's probably a little bit more than you think it is. This property has a gas leak. This property just doesn't have probably the traffic flow that you need. So I mean, it was really, really helpful for them, and it was helpful for me to learn how to assess some of those properties. We've worked with the CLC on the ACD Capital Improvements Project, which I am proud to say is finally, where's Chris? In motion? Yes, close. We're very, very close. And we've had a 59% increase over 2023 in community service response rate, which to me is really exciting. I haven't shut it yet because we're still getting responses as of today. So, one thing I want to show you that really highlights, one thing that we've done is the improvement of reach for our videos. Right? So we've had the Business Spotlight and ACD Icons project for about four years. This is about the fourth cycle. And I just took last, I just took FY '22, '23, and FY '23, '24 to compare the two. So you can see that there is a 66% increase in social media. That's just reach. That's just individual viewers who have seen these. I said, two things. One, making them under two minutes. Two, boosting it and boosting it by like $15, $20 a video made this huge impact on how far they're reached, the number of interactions with those businesses. We have heard that they've gotten a lot of phone calls and things because of them. They're just a much more effective product by actually having a little less product and a little more boosting. Right? And I think things that we're looking forward to coming up. Our next merchants meeting is going to be on September 5th. We're talking with Film Las Cruces, and they are going to be helping our downtown businesses get on the film production vendor list. As I saw Andrew Hara from Film Las Cruces do his presentation, and I thought, why is every business downtown not on this list? So I called him and asked him, and this is our solution. We're, we're going to have it on September 5th. It's going to be an hour. We're also going to record it, so it will be available to, to businesses even if they can't make that meeting. We're doing a, we're in the middle of a DLCP branding refresh. We're growing our board. We've just got a new board member last week and expanding our organizational capacity. We're exploring new funding opportunities, some new grants, again, looking into how we can fund that microloan so we can offer it a little more frequently. Advocacy for mixed-use development in the district, please. Guys, really, that's one thing that's holding us back, is just not enough places to put people as far as businesses, and we just need some residents down here. So we are in full support of that, goes with the zoning issues. Our ACD Writers Group is working to publish its first chat book in November. Cross our fingers, learned a lot about the local publishing industry in this. And we are working to grow our business outreach, including growing our B2B Quick Connect event. And I believe that's all. Ready for questions?
All right, Susan, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, Mayor Protemp?
Thank you. Thanks so much for the presentation. I'm just curious, I just have one question on the folks that are either leaving or closing. Do you do exit surveys?
If we can.
And what kind of information are you hearing?
So there's kind of, one is that the rent is, is too expensive. I would say that that's probably the most predominant issue. Also, that kind of, but traffic patterns are changing a little bit. So, but rent, rent affordability and the viability of that property to, you know, that we've had, we have some property downtown that's been grandfathered in, that's in a little bit rougher shape. And since downtown is doing well, the rent even on those properties is increasing.
And is that information that you're sharing with landlords and owners of those properties?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate you, all the work you're doing. Thank you. Next on the agenda, 3.2 Historical Preservation Commission Annual Report. Larry Nichols will be doing the introductions.
Good afternoon, Mayor Enriquez, members of the City Council, city staff, and members of public. Larry Nichols, Community Development Director. Very pleased today to have the Historical Preservation Commission give you their annual report. This is a part of our ordinance that they will give an annual report to the City Council each year. Just a little brief history on the commission. The Historical Preservation Commission was created in 2019 to assist in implementing the historical preservation ordinance and the plan. The commission's primary duties and interests is the protection of and the preservation of historical buildings, as they are an essential component of our city's heritage. They have, they collaborate with the Community Development Department and the City Manager's Office to advise the city on historical districts and create cultural properties. We, so Community Development Department is staff liaison to the commission, and we support them through administrative support, through the data management, GIS mapping, planning, zoning, and building permits and inspections. The commissioners are appointed to their, because of their experience in such endeavors as architecture, history, engineering, law, architectural history, historical preservation, archaeology, and other relevant areas. Our commission members are Dr. Judy Berryman, the Chair since 2023, David Chavez, Ernie Campos, Dr. Paul Deason, Jeffrey Shepard, Dr. Jerry Wallace, and Patricia Williams. And with that, I'll have an introduction of Dr. Berryman to give you the Historical Preservation Annual Report.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your opportunity. As, thank you, Larry, for the introduction. As noted, for the record, my name is Dr. Judy Berryman. I'm the current Chair. And for the record...
Hi, I'm David Chavez, co-chair.
So what we would like to do first is give a more in-depth introduction to what the Historic Preservation Commission, and I'm going to be calling it the HPC, because it's easier to say. So...
Dr. Berryman, can we get you to talk directly into the microphone so it's recorded?
Is that better? Okay. Sometime this week or last week, you got a very hefty package. And I apologize for the size, but within this package, you receive a copy of Chapter 40. You received a copy of Chapter 2, which is the proposed revision to Chapter 40, comments and changes that the commission has voted on in terms of Chapter 2 changes, and a copy of the Historic Preservation Design Guideline Manual. These documents form the keystone of historic preservation, and I would like to take a little bit of time to go into that. The presentation that we will be given today, I will be given part of it, and David will be giving the other part. So if I can figure out the slides, which I'm not, ah, there we are. So the first slide, Historic Preservation is a city ordinance. It's not a wish. It's not something that will come. As Larry noted earlier, the Chapter 40 was voted in in 2019. It entails the protection of historic resources as a public necessity and a beneficial to economic prosperity and the quality of life. The formation of the Historic Preservation Commission and the pursuing goals and procedures were codified in Chapter 40, which you now have a copy of. So one of the questions that comes up is, in this process, what is a certified local government? That's a good question. So a certified local government is any city, town, or municipality in New Mexico that has met specific eligibility requirements and has been certified through the State Historic Preservation Division and the National Park Service. So it's a rather big deal. The City of Las Cruces is the newest member of the CLG. We are one of 10 cities in New Mexico, and we were qualified in 2021. As a CLG, Las Cruces has a formal role in the National Register of Historic Places nomination process. We have a role in the review of federal and state and local projects that involve historic resources, and we can participate in state preservation plans. So that, we have quite a, a big basket that we can work from. But what are the benefits? So I mean, why was the process carried through and why are we now a member? One of the biggest advantages of being a CLG is the potential to receive federal and state funding. That means real money, through various grants, and the ability to receive assistance and training from the, from the State Historic Preservation Office. So under the CLG program, we are eligible for funding that is only available to other CLG cities, and the Historic Preservation Officer or SHIPOL is mandated to come down and help with the program. In 2023, the city received their first CLG proposal and funding for $60,000. The funding was to update the national and state register for the Mesquite neighborhood. Unfortunately, there was no one capable of taking and pursuing the grant. So that grant was returned. We negotiated with SHIPOL through various processes. The count of the money was depressed, but eventually the entire funding had to be turned back to SHIPOL. However, this does not mean that we are not eligible for future funding. In fact, SHIPOL and state Historic Preservation Officers want to see this program work, and funding will be available for us. So what are the responsibilities as a city? What do we have to do in order to engage as a CLG? So I want to emphasize, without the CLG funding, the city, the HPC, and community development cannot carry through some of the requirements under Chapter 40. There just isn't money in the city budget. So we do have to rely on trying to get some of the state and federal funding. But one of the issues here is, and we'll go into it later, in terms of grants, in terms of the city, there really isn't anyone familiar with the CLG funding. And right now, we don't have a Historic Preservation Specialist, but we'll go into that in a moment. The CLG status establishes a level of credibility for the Las Cruces Historic Preservation Program on both a local, state, and federal level. So I've listed some of the primary responsibilities. So enforce local preservation through a Historic Preservation Ordinance. That's Chapter 40. That's in place. Create and maintain a position of a qualified Historic Preservation Specialist. We have had one, but since March, I believe, he has gone on to other menus. Maintain a Historic Preservation Commission. We have a very active commission with seven members. Right now, if we were to tally experience, we would have experience in historic preservation of over 175 years. So the people on the commission know what they're doing. One of the things under Chapter 40 that is required is to survey and document local historic properties. This has not been done. The second item that is very important with a CLG program is to provide for public participation. Frankly, that's been on a very limited basis. So as you had your packet delivered to you, what is Chapter 40? And currently, it is being revised, but right now, we're just going to talk about Chapter 40. So the entire Historic Preservation Commission is administered by the city manager. As I mentioned earlier, there are seven commissioners, and the Chapter 40 also requires a Historic Preservation Specialist. He is our liaison between the city and the commission. Right now, we are struggling. There is no specialist. It sets out, Chapter 40 sets out the procedures on how a property is designated as historic and what entails. It defines the Certificate of Appropriateness, which we will go into, which is a COA process, and it's the development of the design guidelines, which you now have a copy of. So in general, I, I want to summarize, Chapter 40 is saying that it protects and promotes those buildings and sites and resources that our community can tell a story. Why is Las Cruces unique? You know, what is it that draws people to Las Cruces? You know, what are the values that we are looking for? Through preservation, I believe that we enhance civil pride, civic pride. Obviously, you can point to a historic event or a place and there's a certain amount of civic pride. It creates sustainable neighborhoods. And I think that's really critical in the sense that we have historic districts within the city of Las Cruces. And within those districts, there are families who have lived there over 100 years. And so you have this sustainable neighborhood, a sense of civic pride, and a sense of who you are in terms of, I live in Las Cruces. Preservation also expands housing options and responds to infilling within the city. It makes Las Cruces a heritage tourism designation. And finally, it attracts businesses to rehab underutilized buildings. So, one of the things that is a primary thing that the HPC does is we have a review process. And we are an adjudicating body. So, in our review process, we will look at documents that are given to us and determine whether the proposed changes by the applicant will affect the historic integrity of the building. So the process basically is the applicant will apply for a building permit. If the property is in a designated district or is considered historic, it goes to the historic specialists who will review the documentation with Community Development. HPC will review the applications, review the planning documents, and will prepare a COA or Certificate of Appropriateness. HPC, all of this is under a public hearing. And of course, the applicant has recourse. If they disagree with the finding, they can go to the City Council or ask for a second finding. This captures where we are to date. And I think if anyone were to look at that, you would seriously ask, what is happening? In 1921, the commission reviewed 25 COA decisions. In '22, there were 12. In '23, there were 16. This year, we have only reviewed three. So the question that I would ask you is, are developers getting so wise that they no longer want to rehab historic buildings? Or is community development and the city not doing their job in planning, in terms of catching requests for changes? Requests for zone changing, it's pretty much the same. Appeals is pretty much the same. But I would like you to look at meetings and work sessions that are canceled. That means that under CLG, under Chapter 40, we're required to have monthly meetings. As of this year, we have had four canceled monthly meetings. Very difficult to carry on any type of review with this type of record. So I've lost my space. So, I'm gonna, the last thing I'd like to talk about is the Historic Preservation Design Guidelines. You all have a copy, it is very large. The basis for this is that the city went out for a contract a couple of years ago. They received the guidelines, it was reviewed and rejected. It had fallacies, it had incorrect photographs, and there was really no understanding of New Mexico architecture. So the guidelines sets the standards for preservation. It defines what type of building style, what type of material that should be used, follows the federal guidelines. It is an identification of historic landscapes so that we're all talking the same subject. And it helps to ensure compatibility between new development and existing historic environment. So the quest, the request that the commission has today is that you put this on your next board meeting and to either accept or deny the Historic Guidelines Manual. Because this is a critical key point to following Chapter 40. So I'm gonna turn over the second half and we're gonna discuss a little bit about educational opportunities. David?
The educational opportunities are in Chapter 40. That is the law. You all voted on it. But we were denied to do our work. But, we've done it anyway. We went ahead and have done three walking tours of the historic district, the Mesquite. We've had an art exhibition. We've had historic preservation exhibits. We did a Creative Industries Fiesta at the County Court Building. So, the only way our community is going to understand and learn about its historic past is we are the stewards. We are selected because of our background to do the work, to do outreach, to do educational components as far as getting the word out of what can and cannot be done by reading the ordinance. The sad thing about it, there are many departments in this city that have never looked up the ordinance. Codes doesn't even know what the ordinance is. We've gotten cases in front of us where the public says, well, code said it was okay. And it's a complete violation of the code. So we need to get the word out. And hopefully, and I'm hoping, that we get a specialist in that will do that to educate the departments so we don't have these issues. We're sometimes looked at, the commissioners, as bad guys. They don't want to follow what we do. Well, if council had not voted on this ordinance, then we wouldn't be here. We follow the law to the nail. And there are folks that refuse to follow that. So, we're here to try to push the issue. You all here select us for our background. Not the city staff, but you all. We're here representing you at all these meetings. And we also represent the community when we go out and do community outreach, educational component. We're gonna be doing some artwork presentations, hopefully, to all the schools to teach the students about their history. If you ever pull up a New Mexico history book, it's printed in Indiana. History stops at the coral. They don't even mention much of Las Cruces or Doñana County. So... One of the problems that we've had in the past is that the CLG funding, it's tied to the specialist. That liaison is the one that goes and works with the grant department here in the city. This year, we lost out on $275,000. That's a nice chunk of change. And I'm one of those that, I'm a money person. I hate to see money disappear when we have an opportunity to apply for it. And luckily, we do have some good people in the state that are willing to help us out to see if we can at least try to get some of it. The Fielder House that's photographed in this building, we all had a resolution a few weeks ago that it left it hanging. We don't know if it's gonna be torn down or not. But we have a question that all the commissioners ask is that, who gave the authority from city staff to remove the load-bearing wall in the building? There's nothing wrong with the building, other than the fact that it was self-induced demolition. So the building's still standing. There are folks that don't like the building. It is what it is. It's all a fabric of the historic district. Fielder is a family that was established here almost over 100 years ago. So, you know, that's another problem. We had a problem of demolition on May Street. We have yet to receive any documentation on that. And we're waiting, hopefully, that the property on Mesquite Street will be changed over from owning, being owned by the city and going back to public so it can be bought by the public. There's a housing shortage. There are folks waiting with a checkbook to purchase that building on Mesquite Street. The same situation was on May Street. After having discussions with the city manager and others, that building was supposed to go back to the public. It was torn down on a Friday. So, we have some, we've been in some situations where we have tried our best as a commission to do our jobs. And luckily, with the announcement that there is a search for a new specialist, that things will turn around and be better. Want to say something?
So, final, our final thoughts, why historic preservation? So I've only listed a few of the key points, but an important point to keep in mind, there is so much fallacy about historic preservation that it's too expensive, it denies property ownership, that you have to do certain changes. The reality is only the exterior of the building is ever considered. But it honors the diverse heritage in a sense of place. Las Cruces is unique because if we destroy all of our history, we are no longer unique. An important point also to mention is historic preservation is compatible. It is not against. It is compatible with affordable housing and development of the city. It supports sound community planning, development of economic and heritage tourism. It's also a huge factor in environmental. One of the things that we have tried to do and have not been successful, when a historic building is torn down, all the material goes to a landfill. There is old wood that could be recycled, there are doors that could be cycled. I mean, we could reduce our footprint from an environmental sense. So I would like to finish citing Counselor Coran in June 14th regarding Realize Las Cruces. Realize Las Cruces is a long-term strategy designed to address the housing shortage, and we must do so, do so from every angle. One of these angles must involve the preservation of the city's unique history and culture. Historic preservation is an essential part of helping any city appreciate its past and to responsibly develop its future. Right? With that, I'd like to end it. I would thank you very much and we would be open to any questions that you may have. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the update. Anyone have any comments? No? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's it? Okay. This concludes our items for agenda today. So with that, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second, Corin.
This is on the motion to adjourn the work session. Counselor McClure?
Yes.
Counselor Matisse is absent. Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Coran?
Yes.
Counselor Fletus is absent. Counselor Benkomo?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Welcome to Sealer. Patches must clean, but I love her no more. I hear a neighbor telling my...